Pledge allegiance to the flag of these United States of America and to the Constitution, which founded our republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The record show all city councilor in attendance and would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have two proclamations tonight. First, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize Council Bluffs as a Purple Heart City with this proclamation, City of Council Bluffs, Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation. The City of Council Bluffs in the State of Iowa has always supported its military veteran population. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families to promote patriotism, to support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure we never forget. And whereas the Council Bluffs metropolitan area has a large, highly decorated veteran population. And whereas Council Bluffs appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Therefore, I, Matthew J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, does hereby proclaim the City of Council Bluffs as a Purple Heart City. And I encourage the citizens of the City of Council Bluffs to show their appreciation for the sacrifices that the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms to acknowledge your courage and to show them the honor and support that they have earned. Witness herein with the seal of the City of Council Bluffs on this 23rd day of March in the year 2015. I'd like to present it to you. Thank you so much for your service and you're certainly welcome to make comments if you'd like to.
The only comment I could have is that we are members of the National Purple Heart. These gentlemen agree with me. This is Terry Manerick. He was wounded three times in Vietnam. This is Don Kemper. He was wounded in the Battle of Fall from World War II. And my name's Jerry Ellis. I was also wounded three times in Vietnam. I'd like to urge any of you that have family members or neighbors that have received a Purple Heart that we would warmly welcome them into our organization. The chapter that we're in is Eastern Nebraska and Southwest Iowa. Right now, we've got 134 members. They're not all active. Some are getting older and we need some of the younger folks to come and pass by. Thank you, sir. We meet at the DAV over in Omaha, 45th and, yeah.
Thank you again for your service. Why don't you come up here and you can get a picture with the entire council again? You just stand in front of me, probably. Our second proclamation, we oftentimes have the opportunity to use city proclamations for public awareness efforts. And so, this second proclamation is designating March as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. City Council Bluffs, Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second most common cause of cancer deaths for cancers that affect both men and women in the United States. And whereas 1 in 20 Iowans will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer in their lifetime. And whereas the vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection. And the five-year survival rate of individuals is 90% when cancer is detected at an early stage. And whereas only 40% of colorectal cancer patients have their cancer detected at an early stage. And whereas if the majority of the people in the United States age 50 and older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, the death rate from this disease could be dramatically reduced. And whereas colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, beatable, in most cases. And finally, whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City Council Bluffs, does proclaim March 2015 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Council Bluffs and urge all citizens to take due note of this observance with the signature, my signature and the seal of the City of Council Bluffs effects this 23rd day of March. So, again, if you're over the age of 50, make sure that you get screenings for colon cancer. So, all right, moving on to the public hearings. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-82 authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an electrical easement in connection with the North 28th Street Stormwater Pump Station project. It's proof of publication on file. Have any written protest been received?
Been received.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the conversation?
Ah, yes. Not to the power pot, but I had this, my old neighbor come by the house the other day.
Is it in regards to this issue, sir?
Well, I heard that over in the baseball field.
No, you can speak at the end of the meeting. This is in particular in relation to this particular item, but the meeting is going to go fast and you're welcome to speak at the end of the meeting.
The reason I came was to visit and about to go down there by the riverfront. Is that going to be held tonight, open on the riverfront?
Yes. And so, you say you're wanting to speak in regards to the 28th Street Pump Station?
No, I just have a question about the classes.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else who would wish to speak in regards to the 28th Street Stormwater Pump Station project? Anyone from the council? I guess it's their motion, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Any discussion by the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-83 authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed and any documents necessary to transfer the interest in city property set herein. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Is proof or have any written protest been received?
Been received.
Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in regards to this issue? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Number four.
Orinning's on first reading, Orinning 6229, meaning rezoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.040, rezoning property generally described between I-480 and Avenue B was of existing North 40th Street, commonly referred to as Rivers Edge subdivision. By rezoning proposed block one from R-4 High Density Multi-Family Residential District to R-4 High Density Multi-Family Residential with a PR Plan Residential Overlay and rezoning proposed blocks two and six from R-4 High Density Multi-Family Residential and A-2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to R-4 High Density Multi-Family Residential with a PR Plan Residential Overlay as defined in Chapter 15.11 and 15.28. By rezoning proposed block seven from R-4 Density Multi-Family Residential District to C-4 Commercial District as defined in Chapter 15.17, have rezoning proposed outlots A and B from R-4 High Density Multi-Family Residential to A-2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District, the property as defined in Chapter 15.05, setting a public hearing for April 6, 2015 at 7:00 p.m.
Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00 p.m. on April 6, 2015.
Second. Any discussion?
I want to say that I, my opinion on this is that, you know, a lot of good work has gone into this whole series of ordinances and resolutions into the development of this building project. My concern is the prioritization of this project ahead of the redevelopment of my project.
And then, I'd like to point out for those that are in regular attendance or regularly watch, because we have Memorial Day coming up, if you heard the motion, it was for the April 6 meeting. Typically, we meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Beginning in April, we'll meet on the first and third until Memorial Day so that we can spread those meetings out with a meeting in between. So, I need to adjust your calendars. We will be on the first and the third Mondays from April and May. So, any other discussion? And sir, I believe you said you wanted to address this issue?
What, sir?
Want to address this issue?
About the riverfront or?
Yes.
Yes, I have a few questions.
Please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
I don't know, my name's Tim Page and I live at 1029 Outlake Street. And I don't know all of that. But the way the riverfront is now, who paid for that taxation? That had to fix. Whole little lot, three, four years to fix.
Are you talking in regards to Hanifin Park or to the levee or I'm not sure?
I'm trying to, you know, we go to Fort Omaha, right there on the right. That thing you guys have been working on for three, four years where they hold all the concerts?
That riverfront park was paid for from a variety of sources, State of Iowa grants, Great Places Grants, REIT Grants, a significant contribution from the ILS Foundation and a portion of it from taxpayers.
Could I have a copy of all of that?
If you would stop by the Council Bluffs Parks Department tomorrow, they can give you that detail.
Okay. The only reason I'm saying this, because I thought when that was built, it was going to be built for the people, for the park and, you know, concerts like we hold down there.
Right.
And now you want to turn it into these tall buildings that only 26 acres.
The park will remain as it is. This is on the, what they call the dry side of the levee. The park's on the wet side of the levee, the west side of the levee. This is the old.
Are you still going to hold concerts there?
Yes. We have, one Memorial Day weekend.
It's over on the other side.
It's on the other side, yeah.
That park will remain as it is with some improvements to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I, I motion with the lead, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. And for those at home, go up as far to one. Number four.
Resolutions, Resolution adopting a planned residential development plan and granting preliminary plan approval for a seven lot subdivision to be known as Rivers Edge subdivision. Resolution 15-85 adopting a planned residential development plan for posts, blocks one, two and six, Rivers Edge subdivision. In Resolution 15-86 granting preliminary plan approval for a seven block subdivision to be known as Rivers Edge subdivision, being part of the government lot three of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of section 28-75-44, and part of government lot one of the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of section 33-75-44, and lots 174 through 182 and lots 194 through 201, twin city gardens along with all vacated alleys inclusive, and a portion of North 40th Street line south of the southerly right of way line of Avenue B and north of the state right of way, all in the City of Council Bluffs, Otawatomi County.
Motion to approve Resolution 7A1 and A2, second.
Discussion.
You know, I forgot to mention on the other one, for those people at home who might want to know a little bit more information on what's going on on the dry side of the levee, levee down at Rivers Edge, embedded into the text on 6A is a website that you could click on and it will take you directly to the plan so you can see everything that's been drafted so far.
All of us don't have computers.
You can stop by the Parks Department, David, or Community Development. I guess Parks Department's not, the Community Development Department.
Where's that located?
Across the street below the fire station.
Okay.
And if you go to the library and have someone, Mrs. Doody, to do a search through the newspaper archives, there's actually some pretty good articles and photographs as well.
As well as the internet there and for people to see, it's a fantastic mix of commercial, various types of residential, a lot of things that there's a massive demand for, particularly among retired baby rivers and the up and coming millennials. And it's fantastic and I recommend everybody check it out.
And, you know, this is a project I'm really excited about because it will eventually add a lot of money to the tax rolls and we need that in order to keep our levy low. We need to keep adding more properties, but it is going to be a really nice development. And I know, you know, concerns over priorities. The nice part about this project is we have a developer ready, willing and able to do the project. And that's really, you know, the biggest part of any plan is having somebody willing to execute it and be able to afford to do it and have the ability to do it. So, I'm really excited about it.
And the additional businesses and residents to our community will certainly have a huge impact on our economic growth.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
And again, four to one for those at home.
Resolution 15-84, compromising the appointment of Daniel Jordan in the position of Director of Finance with the City of Council Plus and providing the wage and benefit package offer to him.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-87, authorizing the mayor to execute a certified local government grant award contract to undertake an intensive level survey and evaluation program for a potential residential historic district in the South 8th Street area.
Motion to approve, second.
Nate, I noticed you.
Yeah, if you want to speak, you're certainly welcome to. If you're just here to observe, you're certainly welcome to observe. So, all right, any discussion from the council?
Well, I'd actually like, they're very modest out there and so I'll embarrass them for a moment. The three individuals from the South 8th area, from Bayless West neighborhood there, have been among the biggest supporters and the ones putting in dozens, if not hundreds of hours towards this fantastic project, this partnership between a grant, let's see, applied for, the significant help from you to the federal government and then the city contribution being the labor that you and a few other folks are putting into this project to create the fourth historic residential district. And you really are to be commended for all of the efforts you're putting into this. It's really a lot of some heroes here and so thank you.
Yeah, having looked over the packet, seen the amount of bureaucracy and the amount of hurdles that have to be overcome and the amount of time and dedication that you all have put into this, I only wish it weren't so burdensome on folks like you trying to do something not only for your neighborhood but also for the community. So, I want to echo Mr. Wallace's comments and keep up the good work. Thank you.
And what's interesting to me is this is an opportunity for the groups that's working on this to capture a lot of information, historical information that otherwise may be, may be lost. And Nate, you went through a litany of this afternoon and it's, I think it's just a great opportunity for those who may not be aware of the historical significance of the homes and the people who live there, that it's a great opportunity for them to learn. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Bruce?
One thing I'd like, 864 McKenzie Avenue. Bruce, Bruce Kelly.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like to thank these people for saving these houses and making sure that they are and not turn into apartments and everything. I'd like to get these grand homes to make sure they're improved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-88, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract with Hafnerx Corporation for the city's yard base disposal.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-89, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Compass Utility LLC for the Lower Bennett Rehab Phase 6 project.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion.
I just want to point out that this will be the sixth phase of the Lower Bennett reconstruction of the streets and most of these haven't been reconstructed well in about three generations. And last time we were voting on a lot of streets in the South First area. Just so folks know, the streets that, and a great deal, if not most, if not all of this country voted auction sales tax, it has included recreating entirely Arnold Avenue, Adrian, Nopey, Robin, Lilianville, Lake, the rest of Arnold, Wynwood Circle, Wedgewood Drive, Windsor Circle, Bonham Avenue. And this particular phase now will include reconstruction of portions of Wynwood Circle and Wedgewood Drive that haven't already been reconstructed. And as well, will continue our project of correcting an unfortunate oversight for a few decades of when sidewalks were not required in certain building in our community. This will correct that and put sidewalks there so that people, children can get to school buses safely and families can be out and have a safe way to have a good quality of life. It's a fantastic project that you pay for with your local auction sales tax. And I think you just need to know about that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Evocations for permits and cancellations 8A, 81 and 3 through 10, and 8B salvage yards permits.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Motion to postpone 8A2.
Second.
Discussion.
I really want to encourage the owner of this particular establishment, the Don Corrigan's Bar and Grill at 23, 23, 20 cents, out 24, to take this opportunity and come to the next council meeting. There've been a fair number of rather serious concerns with police calls throughout the year, not just in warmer months or holidays. And give them an opportunity to talk with us and perhaps the police chief about what they might be doing to alleviate these problems so that, speaking for myself, I might be in a position to consider voting for their license renewal. At the moment, I'm rather dubious about doing that, but I want to give them an opportunity to explain how they might fix things if they want.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Number four, do you have requests from citizens of the jury?
Been received.
Anyone from the audience? Don?
Don Angeroff, 10th Double Field Drive. Couple things on 7D, changing the company that's putting, taking up the yard waste. What does that do to the garbage bills?
Same, my understanding is it's the same schedule for the contract about the previous company belonging business.
Okay, so the garbage bill is not changing in any way. Okay. The next thing, I'm here as the president of Potawatomi County Landlord Association. We've got a few members that are a little concerned. We were told when we were negotiating and working out this rental inspection that that would not start until August and that before that, we were promised some classes that were going to be offered. What about this clean sweep that's been taking place for the last week over here west of Bayless Park where the city is going and inspecting rentals, which is a little different than what we've been told? And so, we have some members that are in, concerned about this.
Not aware of that. I'll find out for you. If you'd like to call the office tomorrow, I'll have an answer for you. It did not, the full-scale rental inspection program employees have not been hired yet.
Yes, I understand that.
And we always had a rental inspector and so it doesn't mean that she stopped doing her job until August.
No, but it's just so funny that there's plenty of large area all at once, which is different than just sending out a notice to a landlord here and there. It's different.
It's based on areas of use. It's also based on complaints and so folks who are honestly filling out forms under the current standards, which actually will get in about two dozen ways, more advantageous for you in August when that goes into effect, have nothing to worry about. It's the current law. It's the current law, you already self-inspect. If folks are getting caught doing things they shouldn't be doing, well, then-
It's not a matter of being caught, it's a matter of being city inspected sort of ahead of the schedule we were, you know, presented.
I don't believe that's the case, because again, we haven't hired that staff.
That's true.
And it's somewhat ironic to me that members of your association would be suing the city for not doing their job, and now appear protesting because they're doing their job. I find that somewhat strange to the answer.
I totally didn't think, but-
I don't think that.
Well, it is costing the taxpayer money to defend against the lawsuits that the organization folks, a part of it, have filed about the current program. No lawsuits about the change, but the current program that many folks said they wanted to keep are suing, claiming that it's poor of their wrong. At the same time, the cost of the taxpayer money to defend, so I'd echo the mayor, it is confusing. And I wish there'd be some consistency as to what folks want or what they're against, rather than immediately being against things at one time for it or not.
I don't think the lawsuit was against that type of inspection. It was about other proceedings, but that's not the handle here.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Anybody from the council?
Bruce Kelly, eight six four McKenzie Avenue. Behind the Elks Club, I don't know if any of you ever been out there and stuff, we have a sloop pond back there. How long is those sloop ponds supposed to be in existence from the building that was draining for, is telling me a minute?
In today's DNR regulated water quality environment, they're not called sewer ponds anymore, they're called detention ponds. And typically, those detention ponds are designed so that they will drain. They're there to retain water a length of time to allow the sediment in the water to settle, and then the water to vent out into the sewer system. And so I'm not sure exactly as to the design of that pond. One of the things that I do know is when there was a major project in town, and I can't remember for sure exactly which one it was, but that area was mined for the dirt. And so I don't know if the contractor created a non-draining detention area so that water wouldn't run out. I'm really not familiar, but I can find out for you if you give me a call.
Okay, one of the things I was worried about, stuff like that, mostly when we do rent the facility out, we have bees going over there because they hear the frogs and everything. And I know it belongs to one of the real estate companies owns it and stuff like that, and it's not fenced in, and they did come in last year and cut the tree down, and it took me forever to get them out there to get a deer out of this, out of this, and like, that's what, and when it does drain, they don't maintain around where it's supposed to be drained, and the city doesn't maintain it either, which is, it's not on their-
City's property.
And stuff, and we fight with them and everything. I gotta say, Virgil Anderson came over and cleaned it out for us. I couldn't get the people that owned it, the property, to come out, because they said we'd been out there once, and we're not coming out again. And that's one that's tearing our parking lot is a mess. We live, lives up on top of our parking lot out there, and now our parking lot is crumbling apart.
Who's the owner?
Well, that's why I hated to say, you know, I don't know who actually does own it, Fairway Homes, their property, the people that own the businesses in that building, each own-
I had to go through-
Each own their own building, would pay a CAM fee for culinary maintenance, and Virgil was the person who did the excavation, and I don't know if that's on his property, I don't know if it's on Elks property, so I hate-
It belongs to one of our major real estate companies.
Well, the, the-
Because I-
Those are condos, well, some are rented, some are condos, so.
I'll talk about, it drains off of the, where the Dennis down end of this area and stuff, behind it and stuff. Like I said, mosquito, mosquito property, we got mosquito problems, we got kids and stuff, and we, I mean, we're out there yelling at kids to keep out, and there's no fencing, nothing.
Yeah, I'll look into it for you, but if it was designed for that project, it is a true detention area, and our detention areas typically don't have fencing around them, but their depth is such that-
Yeah.
That it shouldn't be a risk to people. The Dennis actually owns his property, so again, that-
Well, that's just something I wanted to bring up. And then one of the other things, I read the newspaper, I know our budget, you guys figured that out, and everything like that, and I was, I heard there might be a shortfall in it and stuff like that. Reabout buy a new compactor for like, to compact our trash down there.
There are two, what they call proprietary businesses that the city runs. One is the sanitary sewer system, and we saw the fees go up on that last week. It's not paid for with property taxes, it's paid for by assessing a fee for usage. The other proprietary business is refuse collection.
Refuge.
And I get this look again, shaking his head, but that's exactly how it's paid for. And the refuse collection is paid for by garbage fees, and that is its own separate business, and they also run the recycling center. And so the recycling center and the garbage collection fees then are used to run those operations, it's not paid for by tax dollars.
Oh, this isn't gonna be a part, this is coming out of their business.
It's coming out of their business, the recycling center. And the reason they're doing that is it costs money to ship bales of cardboard and paper, and these new compactors will compact it tighter, allow them to get more on the semi-trailer, and cut back on some of the shipping expense.
What I, typically what I was looking at, I was, is the city gonna have to pay for it, or they gonna pay for it?
The, uh-
New compactor.
It will come out of the refuge fund, so it's not-
Oh, it is coming out of the, it's already something that's already been collected for, okay.
Now, again, the individual residents of the city pay a garbage fee, so if you say the city residents are gonna pay for it, yes, they are, but it's not coming out of tax dollars, it's coming-
What I meant, what I was worried about is, is it, was it coming out of our general fund, and we didn't intend for-
And you're right, the general fund-
I had that question, I wanted it cleared up, because, you know, you got a machine, maybe it's not back in its business, and we got a deficit, you know, we don't have what we think we had coming in. Is it, how long is it going to take to recapture that three hundred fifty thousand dollars versus if we kept the same machine going for another few more years until we can afford to buy it?
I don't have an honest answer for it, so-
So that's what I-
I get that information, but I'd be, I'd be asleep if I gave some type of time for it.
You know, that's what I was worried about, but if it's not going to raise our garbage and raise you right now, then it's not, it's not a tax burden problem, it's, and stuff. I know I talked to Nate last time about it, and that's what I was trying to get, because if we were, had a shortfall, and we didn't have the general fund, we shouldn't be buying that.
And I remember your point, and I understand what you're saying, it's just, in this case, we can't, that money separates, so, you know, those, as the mayor says, the two proprietary things we do, those pay for themselves. And so if we, if we take the money out, if we raid the money to pay for other things, first of all, that's really bad budgeting.
Yeah.
And secondly, that would be a very clever way to get all sorts of money from other programs to raise taxes through the back door, and that's just not proper budgeting. And so on its budgeting, that money stays with that money. And it's, they make a small profit generally with that business, it runs itself, and they think this is gonna make it more efficient so that they can continue to-
As long as the rates-
Certain rates don't go up.
As long as the rates, you know, that's what I-
It should save money, it's the cost of, it's the cost of labor and space.
Okay, that, that's a different deal, I figure, to, we're running the place down there, and we have, that's coming out of our general fund, and we don't have the money to really pay for it.
No, it's separate, so.
So that, that makes a difference.
I hear your saying.
That's like, maybe county got into it about putting in a security system and tell everybody they didn't, didn't have the money to pay for it, and we raised everybody's taxes.
Thank you.
And I'm still trying to find out when they have meetings down there.
Where?
For Parks. The one that, the one that's in the-
The commission, the Parks Commission?
He says he thought they had one, one tomorrow.
Do you have, do you have the agenda, or the-
The only thing I could find was on Fairmont, and they only meet every three months.
Well, there's Parks Commission.
Well, they had two months.
You're talking about the Parks Commission, right? The Parks Board?
Yeah.
I think maybe, Marcy, you have access to that information, right?
Sure.
You wanna get with Marcy tomorrow, and she'll be able to let you know with the schedule list?
And so it's also on the city website under, under agendas, you just-
Oh, it is underneath, yeah.
You can, you can sign up to get an email or a text message if you do one of those two things, or, you know, the reason why it was three months they didn't have a meeting, is I understand it from their minutes in January or February, they didn't have any-
Well, they got two boards, one's the Fairmont board, that only meets every three months.
I don't think there's, there's no official board, there might be friends at Fairmont Bar or something.
Friends of Fairmont, they need it here in Europe, in the chain.
But I think you, you're asking about the Parks Commission, I thought some, yeah, so that's, that's, the schedule's on, on.
And every time I try to get ahold of Mr. Foster, he's either gone or off to the office. I still have a tree up there, I had it eight twenty-five, but it needs to be trimmed and this, I guess it's three and a half now, it's gone on four years.
Just leave a message to the desk, Larry's been on vacation for-
I've already talked about it, but we've been arguing about it for three years.
He'll be back tomorrow.
Okay. I know we'll do that tomorrow, I don't know.
Anybody else? Anybody from the council? Again, I wanna remind you that beginning next month, we go to the first and third, Mondays of the month, or the month of April and the month of May. I've gotten some calls in regards to two things, and Bruce mentioned the security system at the courthouse. It reminded me of one, which I've gotten, people that have called, people that have actually left the courthouse and come over to the city hall to express their displeasure about the new security system at the courthouse. That is a county facility, and as such then, is overseen by the county board of supervisors, and so that is who those questions should be directed to. Today, I received my first call on the, um, potential eminent domain that would occur with the new Council Plus School District, expansion of their athletic field, again, assessing blame on the city. I just don't think people realize that when you vote in elections, you vote for three different major taxing authorities. You vote for the city council, which is the lowest tax collector in the city of Council Plus. You should also vote for the county supervisors, because they're the second highest tax collector ahead of the city. And the Council Plus School District, who I believe is talking about lowering their levy, but prior to lowering their levy, is the highest collector of property taxes. And so the Council Plus School District has the ability to use eminent domain, and if people object to that power that the state legislature has given them, and want to express concerns to the responsible parties, that is the Council Plus School Board, it's not the city council or the mayor's office. And so I just want the people, if they want to represent themselves, let them know that those are who they should go to to talk about those things. I know the school district has a meeting tomorrow at six o'clock, and so, I think that was in the newspaper, but just an update for information purposes. And with that, we're adjourned.
No, you only give up to Bruce.
Thank you.
Well, you didn't give your credit.
That's why I said no.
So that makes me, I come up, did you play, I wanted to hear it.